This conference will now be recorded.
Is the agenda. Well, I guess first thing is the introduction. So welcome to our virtual format. We in general have planning commissioners video on and any presenters or any public trying to get our attention in the moment. Otherwise, we have our public members and participants with video off until it's maybe time for a comment. Also, in general, try to keep your microphone on mute. We sometimes get some feedback. In general, on items while planning commissioner comments and then we'll kind of ask specifically for public input. Anytime you can use the chat. Please make sure you're using the chat for items we're specifically working on and not using it for back and forth between people. It's kind of equivalent to raising your hand in the public format. Okay, so agenda items. I would like to under other business, just kind of check in on our schedule for next week. Make sure we are clear on meeting night. You know, there were some conflicts on Tuesday, which is what we had kind of originally agreed to. Anything else? Bernie?
Yeah, did you just just want to briefly cover what you hope to achieve, what your objective is for tonight?
My objective is.
I think they were talking about trying to get to the point where we could have something to warn.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that is an overall objective. For under item five, but we can maybe cover that kind of specifically then because it is kind of on the agenda. But you know, I think trying to keep the meeting efficient so we can we can get there would be great. Any, any? Okay, other agenda things, then open to the public for items not related to the agenda. So if anyone has anything, you can turn your video on, you can put something in the chat. You could raise your hand. Looks like Robert is waving. You can state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Teresa Davis and this is.
This is Robert.
Robert Davis.
Hi, welcome. Go ahead. If you have something not related to the agenda.
Sure. Thank you very much. We appreciate this. So I'm the owner and founding director of Davis Studio located at 916 Shelburne Road, which is across from the new Hannaford Shopping Center and south of Coto. So for those of you who aren't familiar, we're an arts and education center and offer art classes for all ages from youth through adults. And we also have an arts-based preschool. So we serve the entire age range of individuals in our community from preschool through seniors. We're here this evening to see if the board is willing to engage in a conversation about expanding the exemptions allowed in LDR section 18.03. And this is the section that deals with housing replacement. We have a small building at the back of our property that currently includes two one-bedroom apartment units, one of which is currently unoccupied. We would like to renovate this building in order to expand our high-quality childcare offerings. So you know, we are big supporters of affordable housing and we are also advocates of quality childcare. So we really appreciate the effort. Those of you who are making policies that are good for South Burlington and we applaud your work on affordable housing. But sometimes innovation has unintended consequences. And in this case, paying a substantial fee into the Affordable Housing Fund is coming directly from funding aimed at alleviating the shortage of childcare in our community, including new childhood education grant funds that we are seeking and are obtaining to support this project. So as I'm sure you know, the expansion of quality childcare is a statewide priority and it's just, it gets complicated and unfortunate when one priority negatively impacts another priority. We just want to have a conversation about how this is affecting us, how it might affect others and how to balance these two worthwhile community goals of affordable housing and quality childcare. So if this is something the board is willing to consider, we'd be happy to work with you to figure out a solution. Our request would be to add childcare to the list of exemptions. And our goal tonight is just take the temperature of the board to see if this is something we should pursue.
Okay. Great. So because it's not on our agenda, we can't make a kind of formal motion. Usually what we do with a new item is kind of get a sense from the commission if it's something that the commission's interested in adding to a future agenda. So I guess that would be kind of as much as we would do tonight.
We understand that.
Yeah. I mean, it seems very reasonable. I know there's a lot of interest in supporting more childcare however we can. So I don't know. We do have kind of a larger project that we're kind of committed to in the very short term. You know, do people have a sense if this is the kind of thing that we could kind of add in? In the short term, Ted, did you?
I definitely think it deserves merit. So whenever we can put that together, that would be terrific.
Yeah. Okay, and Michael?
Yeah, I would suggest to Robert, to the Davises, that at this point, wouldn't it would be good if you would send the commission a written what you've asked for in writing so that we have something to work with when we do get it on an agenda and we don't start from scratch again.
Yeah.
We'd be happy to do that.
I think that sounds great. Good. Well, thank you. And anything else from commissioners on that? Monica?
Um, I just was going to say this, we just had a conversation in a recent meeting about the importance of adding, forgive me if I'm thinking of a different meeting, but the importance of adding childcare as an option within PUDs, I believe. Maybe it was the commercial TNDs. Sorry, this may have been an Affordable Housing Committee meeting. So I, but I believe that the importance of childcare being included in neighborhoods did come up. And that's, that building is also walkable to so many neighborhoods back there that that's what one of the things that popped for me. So I agree with Ted that getting it on, if it's something that you know, doesn't can keep us moving forward would be great.
Okay. Well, I mean, unless people are opposed, it would be nice to wrap up this conversation. Michael, did you?
Yeah, I'll be quick. I think Monica is referring to the the discussion we had on a commercial, small commercial building in a in a neighborhood where we said, let's include childcare.
Yes, yes. Very good. Very good. Well, thank you. And it's a great facility you have there. So this is very good to bring to our attention. Paul Ingalls, did you want to go?
They, can they go ahead and draft sample change in the LDR that we could just consider?
So we do, we, they can. That is a process that some people take. We do have kind of a written policy on what we're asking for people. And it's usually that they're presenting their kind of policy and then staff and we kind of figure out the exact best way to kind of make that change. But if if you want to take a crack at that, I know you're maybe not experts on LDRs, but that's definitely an option.
You're right about that.
But I thought jump off point is always a nice place to work from.
Would it, would we send that to Paul or somebody on the?
So that would come to Paul. You can also copy me his chair to make sure it gets through if you want.
Great. Thank you very much for your time. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other items not related to the agenda? Tim, are you trying to say something? I see your microphones on.
Okay.
Really, I have a mute on my headset, so it looks like my microphone is on, but it's not. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, announcements and staff report. Any announcements? Michael?
Yes, I have. An announcement or a request for help with the with Green Up Day this year. In the, over the past eight or nine years, it's been largely as a volunteer part of it, been done by the South Burlington Land Trust and it's, it's quite a heavy lift for the, for them now. So we're looking for help, additional partners who can make over what the land trust was doing or part of it. So if anybody has any ideas of who we could turn to for help, the last would appreciate it. And you can contact them through me or through Sarah Dopp.
Great, thank you. And is there a date set? I know it's usually in early May. Is that?
It's the first of May this year.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Any additional staff report other than what was in our, well, I guess we didn't have one in the memo.
Yes, I have three very exciting updates for you related to pedestrian and bicycle projects. So we got word in this past week that we were successful on two grant applications to the state. One is to construct a side, a, a, a crossing of Kennedy Drive over by West Twin Oaks Terrace. So kind of near the edge fitness. So that would narrow the street a little bit and put an island halfway across to make it easier for people to cross at that point, get to the bus stop, get to the rec path. That's the first one. The second one is, we just heard today that we got, we were successful in our grant application for expanding the bike path south of the US Forest Service Building on Spear Street, down and uphill, up towards Swift Street. And the third one is, I think I've mentioned this before, that we've been working with our partners to try to move the bicycle share program towards the next generation of e-bikes, electric assist bikes. And I got an email today with a photograph of the fleet of new electric assist bikes here in the Burlington area. So they arrived today. So that's really exciting news and it's really going to be a really exciting part of a future transportation network. As I think I mentioned before, non-electric assist bikes are very popular going down hills. They're very unpopular going up hills. So this will, you know, be potentially a really significant game changer. And the, we've secured the new library slash city hall building as going to, as one of the sites where there will be stops. So people will be able to do that. So three great, exciting news this week on the bike pad front. Bernie?
Yeah, Paul, on the e-bikes, are, is there going to be any consideration as to whether they will or will not be allowed on the bike paths and whether people will or will not be required to get a little training on how to use those? I guess as a person that uses the bike path, I've seen people going way too fast on e-bikes and not always under the the best of control.
So that's a great question, Bernie. I was actually invited to testify just 10 days ago to the Vermont Senate where they are advanced a bill out of committee that is now, I'm not sure exactly where it is, but it passed unanimously out of committee to specifically define e-bikes as, as a, as a thing and to set certain upper limits on their speeds and things like that consistent with national guidelines. And within that, to give municipalities the authority to specifically address usage on shared use paths like the, like the rec path in South Burlington. So first step is state authorization. I don't think we've had the discussion at the local level on that yet, but first step is the state authorization to do it.
Yeah, they're, they're, you know, a really good thing for, for people that wouldn't otherwise get out. I mean, I've, I've seen people that, you know, tourists and stuff on the bike path that, you know, it really opens up, you know, nature and the path for a lot more people. So from Maddox's perspective, it's really great. And then they are great for going up hill. But you know, with anything, there's also, you know, people that, like I said, they go a little too fast. So and on the bike path in particular, where you have kids on little bikes with training wheels, having an e-bike roaring down the path is not a good thing. So.
Looks like Ted and then Monica.
One quick question. I'm not sure if I read this or dreamt it or whatever, but something with regard to the, the big dip in Spear Street. Was there a discussion of actually doing some kind of bridge or mitigate that dip? Or was that, is that not part of the? That's a heck of a dip for some people are not used to biking.
You mean just the dip, the entire down and up?
Yeah.
I'm not sure if possibly one of the exit 13 I-89 options was looking at improving that. That's, that would be the only place that I've seen it other than sort of, you know, big dreaming that we always invite UVM students to, to think creatively about solutions. So it's possible that there's been some big picture. I don't know. I see Bob Britt is there from the Bike Pad Committee. I don't know if he's aware of anything beyond that.
Okay.
Yeah, it wasn't part of the I-89 conversation last week.
Exactly. The I-89 option, the single diamond.
Great. I think Monica was not, or Jason, you're, you've probably been working on that.
Just to clarify on that, it, there is an option in the I-89 study that would remove that bridge. That is that basically the, I think the bottom of that dip, it would be the, let's see the, get my direction straight, the eastbound barrel of 189. It would reorient that and move it to be parallel with the westbound barrel of 189. But as a, you know, project team, we haven't gone further down the road, if you will, excuse the pun, of, of correcting the dip on Spear Street. It's a little, little ahead of the game. We have to figure out which, which interchanges are going to move forward first, if, if any, or, or what combination and what have you. But I like the idea that's out there.
Okay, anything, Monica, you would your hand up?
Really quickly on the electric bikes. Different from the bike paths, I actually saw a very competent person using an electric bike on Shelburne Road. And there was a lot of traffic in the right lane waiting, people waiting to turn, not as much traffic in the left. And that's where this gentleman was. And I mean, he was, I don't know that there's any issues with that, but he was using it very carefully and wisely to commute more efficiently. So I thought it was great. But you know, he was on a busy road, so we might see more of that as well.
Okay, any more announcements? Okay, then we're going to move on to item four, which is the Swift Street and Spear Street intersection improvement feasibility study. And Duncan has been volunteering as our representative to the committee. And I'm not sure who's taking over the discussion here.
Tomorrow's going to lead the conversation.
Great. Paul, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Delilah Hall. I'm the Zennian Administrator for those of you who I haven't met. And I have with me tonight from the study team, Duncan McDonald, of course, Jason Charis and Sai Sarapalli. And Sai is going to, Sai and Jason are going to walk you through an overview of the study, cover the study timeline. And then we'd like to open it up to some questions and comments and general input from the committee here. So with that, I'll give it over to Sai.
Can I say at the outset, that was a really super presentation that whoever put together, really, really good.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sai Sarapalli, Senior Transportation Planning Engineer at CCRPC. And I'm the project, project manager for this project. Okay. So we are working with DuVice and King, the consultant team on this, for this project to develop conceptual plans for the intersection of Swift Street and Spear Street, Spear Street, which will develop conceptual plans for the city's future use. To, as the development occurs, then these conceptual plans will help the city to make decisions on the developments at this intersection. So in this process, at this point, we have, I mean, the consultant has collected information, existing information and developed this story map, which you probably have seen. It's available on the city's website and also on our CCRPC website. And, and they also came up with a survey, which is also posted online. And we are seeking comments from public until April 8th. And yeah, we are so excited. There are already like 180 responses from public. So we have and so once we get all these responses, we're going to take this to the consultant and develop some alternatives to look at like different alternatives at this intersection, how to make, you know, things better and safer for pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, depending on comments and feedback from this committee, from, you know, public at large, and come up with conceptual plans. And then, you know, we're going to have another analysis of all this design, different ideas. And then we'll bring those ideas back to this committee for, you know, for discussion and see which one looks better and which one, like, you know, is more feasible and practical in constructability and, you know, improving safety. And then hopefully at the end, we'll have like a preferred, preferred alternative design. So this is a, like, you know, in a nutshell, the whole process. Yeah, this, I think the purpose of this meeting is more to get information and feedback and comments from public and from the committee. So if you have any questions or anything that can I can answer. But we definitely welcome any comment, any feedback, you know, any observations that you make at this intersection. Really appreciate that.
Um, Delilah?
I just would like to add there, I don't know if all of you have had a chance to take the survey, but I would encourage everyone to, to take the survey and spread the word out about the survey as well. It's great that we've gotten such, you know, a lot of 180 responses to date, but we'd like to get more.
Michael?
Yes, I had a question about the survey, whether, are you going to tabulate the results and then score? And then score it? In other words, you know, how many people said they want this and how many people said they want that? So that you get a sense of how the priorities are seen by, by those who've completed the survey. Tabulation and scoring.
Yeah, I mean, you know, there is not nothing like scoring for any, I mean, we didn't provide any designs in the survey. This is more like a general questions, like, you know, what do you think safer, what are, what are, what are your, you know, safety concerns? So I just browsed through some of those comments and most of the people like, you know, mentioned that there is a poor side distance at some local, some corners. And some said that, you know, there's a confusion between turning moments. So these are all these common things, like common observations that people made. We can develop a, like a summary of the survey, which can summarize like, you know, what are the most important points talked a lot or, you know, more comments. And we can provide like a summary of the survey. Does that answer your question, Mike?
Yeah, yes, I think so.
And then I guess, is there any specific other feedback you want for us, from us at this point? I mean, this was a really great summary of existing conditions and it made sense to me from my experience in intersection, kind of what I was seeing in there.
Yeah, you know, any, any, any comment, any suggestions are, you know, are welcome and we definitely like your feedback. We definitely encourage everyone to take this away.
Okay, Duncan, and did you want to?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to let the other commissioners know that we did talk about, when we talked about the traffic at the intersection, we did talk about the impact that the what's confusing Dorset Meadows and Spear Meadows. Spear Meadows, I think, is the subsequent, the impending neighborhood there. We did talk about the traffic there, what that would add for an increase. We didn't really, and I brought it up at the meeting and I can't remember the exact response. It had to do with the Quinney Aska development. Obviously, that's another 100-plus units further down Spear Street that's going to add traffic here. And I can't remember Sai if or Jason, how that was, what, if that was factored into the, the traffic numbers.
That's a good question.
I'll, I'll take that side because I think, I think I was there and answered it at the meeting. I think it was directly factored in, given its distance from the project. But with that, that there is a general background growth that is, is being accounted for. And so that development would be accounted for in that background growth assumption. And that's the whole, that's kind of the whole reason behind assuming just a base level of background growth to account that, you know, general development growth that you may not be specifically targeting because it's a decent distance away from the intersection.
Monica?
And then this is, this is jumping ahead quite a bit, but I, I believe there have been conversations about possibly looking at a rotary for this area. And just in preparation for that kind of conversation, I can't ever imagine, or I don't, I don't think I've ever experienced a rotary that also was an excellent bike pad management tool, because I find rotaries for cars to be confusing in themselves. So just if that is something that's a possibility, what you guys might look at, if you had some good examples of how to incorporate bike pad in with cars that we could look at from other parts of the country or anything, you know, that would be helpful to understand in advance, but I'm not meaning to go there yet in the conversation, just preparation for us.
Okay, Ted had his hand up and then we have a question in the chat.
I had a quick question.
Yeah.
Sure. Sorry, just to, I think that's a great heads up, Monica, and I appreciate you bringing it up. I, I was perusing through some of the comments that came in on the survey and, you know, there's, there's typical, as we see with, oh, roundabouts. If you could, there is a distinction there in the traffic world. It's subtle, but it has to do with the size of the circle. Rotaries are much bigger and older and faster and high speed. Whereas roundabouts are smaller in nature and force people to go slower. So that's a kind of a subtle difference there. But we typically see with roundabouts that there are people who are, are very much for them and people who are very much a little cautious in, in seeing something like that move forward. And I think that largely has to do with them just being new to the state. We don't have a whole lot of them. I want to say there's maybe 20 to 30 throughout the whole state. VTrans has been installing them throughout the state where safety is predominantly a driving issue at the intersections. Because they're, they've been proven to be pretty safe for cars and pedestrians. Designs are improving for bicyclists. I wouldn't say it's cut and dry there. It's a little bit of a mixed bag. Some have been shown to be very safe for bikes. Other designs are a little different, but we're just a little in the infancy there. But there are designs that can accommodate bicyclists reasonably well. And if that is an alternative that, you know, we think has a strong likelihood of moving forward, you know, we'll be prepared to do some more education and background to people so that they can become more familiar with how they work and, and what the pros and cons are.
Ted, did you have your hand up? And then, okay, Paul Ingalls?
I had just more of a technical question for us. Is it possible we have presenters like this for us to see the presenters rather than seeing each other?
You can always see, so my list of options is everyone who's talking, active cameras. So for myself, I leave it on active cameras so I can see the commissioners really well and anyone who pops up with a comment. You might want to try the who's talking if you'd like to see the, the talking person bigger.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that the people that are, those two people next to the?
So mine's at the very top in the middle. It says view active cameras or there's like a toggle up and down on my screen. Very top. Top center, yeah, like on the bar.
Yeah, I don't, I guess I don't have that. Yeah, I don't, I guess I don't have that.
Okay, I don't know if, what, if you're viewing on a certain thing, maybe someone else could help, but.
I've got an iPad.
Yeah, I guess if somebody else is on iPad, maybe you know how to do that, but.
I don't know if an iPad has that feature. I think an i, iMac does, but I don't know if an iPad does.
Okay, yeah, I'm.
Yeah, it does. So Paul, if you go to the little camera icon in the upper right-hand corner. You know, you've got your cam and it says you can have your cam go on and off. But underneath your picture, there's a thing that says all talking or none. I think that's where you would select. Who you want to see.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Bernie.
Yeah, thanks, Bernie. Jason or Si, we have a question in the, or a question in the chat there. I don't know if you can see that and have a. Kind of response about the, the traffic light programming and how that would come into play here. Um, or Delilah, maybe that's something you.
I can't explain it fully as, as the, the question is asking, but the signal timing for the intersection was provided. By Department of Public Works to the study team. And I'm happy to take back to our public works. Check it right now. You're saying that the south, the south heading seems to be out of whack in some way.
Sorry, this is, this, can you guys hear me? This is Melissa Passanon who put that question in. And it's, okay, it might be easier to verbalize it. Yeah, my office window happens to look right out at about. Probably the seventh car that would be backed up from that traffic light. And there at certain times of day in the afternoon particularly, it backs up. And my husband was biking through it today. He was at that light, he said, for three cycles while other cars went in the other directions. Which is what I have observed when being in a car. Like, it's, I keep meaning to let you guys know. And I'm sorry that I'm doing it at this meeting, but other than that, we are super excited about better access. Walking and biking along this stretch. So I just want to say yay, thank you for that. But yeah, there's, it definitely feels wrong. I don't know. Monica, I know lives further down that way too. I don't know if you've noticed it, but.
I'll definitely mention this and I wrote down what you were saying to share with.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Maybe. Or. I'm not hearing any, so we can have Ted go in the meantime. Go ahead.
I said a quick question. I wonder if we're, it might be more macro picture for bike and pet. But I'm wondering if we need to start thinking about having wider bike paths in light of the electric bikes. I know some communities actually have. Yellow strip or a white strip down the middle of the path. So there's walkers can feel very comfortable, but then the other part is for more bikes or. Bike, you know, electric bikes. So, you know, this may be a start. That if we consider this complex, maybe make those lanes a little bit wider and then as. Time goes on, maybe any subsequent bike paths around the community might be widened. Even, even Burlington's bike path can get a little dicey with the kind of traffic that they, that they have. The thought, maybe it's not relevant to this discussion.
Well, that's great. I saw Bob Britt pop up. Were you trying to? Provide input?
Yeah, the, the, the national standards have increased from eight to 10 feet as. But we're still focused on closing gaps. And so when we can. When we're building new paths. Trying to do 10-foot paths whenever possible. Hopefully solve that issue.
Great, thanks. I think I saw someone else's hand. Duncan?
Actually, this is a quick question for Bob Britt. Bike and Pet Committee give any sort of official recommendations on the interception? Back to the committee, to our, to the subdivision? I don't know if you guys gave us any sort of formal. List of what you'd like to see or what you think would go well there?
We just found, we just learned about this. At the, when Paul Connor sent out the message through Face, Front Porch Forum, so. We don't have another meeting until after April eighth, so we'd have to give that input after that date. I don't know if that answers your question.
Um, I was thinking it would be great to have some feedback from the Bike and Pet Committee.
Yeah, we'd love to be involved in, in that, in how it all fits together. Perhaps we could have a representative on the project team.
Um, Nick Anderson?
Yeah, I was just going to say Duncan, are you meaning on this study or are you meaning on the 2020? Study that happened last year?
I'm talking about the Spear Street, Swift Street intersection.
Okay, cool. We can, we can surely talk about it. It just might be, yeah, timing.
And maybe there's some flexibility in committee. I think that that would be something to hear from Delilah, maybe.
Uh, so the, the survey closes on the eighth, correct, Si? But the, if, if, if the committee, if the Bike Ped Committee wants to. You know, provide some comments into the study, you can do so after April eighth.
That would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, that seems like a great idea. Monica?
I just wanted to pass along, there's been conversations within the community about, especially on faster roads like Kennedy Drive and Spear Street is a fast road. The idea of also adding. Barriers like the, those orange posts, some kind of barrier between bike. And road. I don't know if it's based on speed limit, but there are, there have been a lot of community concerns about. Bike and Ped safety on the faster roads. So while you're here listening to this, I just wanted to put that out there. The comments were more in regard to Kennedy. Drive in general, but Swift or Spear does have that kind of speed as well. So just take that into account as well when you're making your considerations.
Can I, the quick question, I may have missed it. Was there a date that the, was it the Bike Ped Committee? Was there a date that they could provide separate comments by? It sounded like it would be after when the survey closes, but I wasn't sure. I don't think, I think I missed when they could provide comments by.
We don't.
So the next time we could talk about it, Jason, at the Bike Ped Committee. Would be April 14th is our next meeting and we could probably provide comments pretty quickly after that if that. Met your timeline.
I think so, Si. Yeah. Okay, thanks.
We do have a pretty full agenda ready for that meeting, but we can see if we can fit it in.
Yeah, the, the project timeline is that we are planning to finish this project by end of June. That's the fiscal year. So there's a, two more important steps that we need to go through, like, you know, developing the conceptual designs and then, you know. Reviewing those results and then presenting them again to the company. So, I mean. I mean, time is flying, so it's already spring and you, you know, it's already getting warmed up. So people might be taking vacations and. You know, all those things happening. So we do, we really appreciate if you can get us comments as early as possible so that we can move forward.
And then it sounds like there'll be additional timeframe for comment from, from us and public and maybe other committees as well as that kind of the next step.
So the, the survey is online, so I, I think it's my understanding that, you know, it's already open to all other committees in the city. So April eighth would be like a deadline or like, you know, pretty much like, you know, for all committees and all. Departments and public to make comments and, and provide feedback. So just kind of, I, I didn't get to your point, like, you know, are you?
I mean, that there's a, a future project step where you're going to have designs or something like that that we would also comment on. That was what I meant. What are kind of the next steps and?
Yeah, yeah, next step, yeah, exactly. So next step, we'll have, you know, conceptual designs, pretty much like, you know, embedded in the same story map. We'll, we'll show you different concepts and those will be brought back to the committee.
And we'll also share them with Bike Ped too.
Yes.
Come out, so you don't have to find out about it.
Yeah, just a question. How much right away does the city have so that when we're talking about it? Ways to straighten out the intersection, ways to add perhaps three lanes so that there's left, right and center. Turning lanes. Just be, just to know what the parameters are, what our constraints are for comments.
I. Think one of the story map pages shows the, the property lines in relation to the road.
Yeah.
You go through the, I forget which, which part, but there is, there is, there is a, a slide in the story map that shows. Property and actually distinguishes whether it's city or, or private.
Okay, great. And, and. Do you know if we have any options to expand on that?
I mean, we can evaluate those impacts, like, you know, certainly there will be impacts, you know, in some options. So some impacts would be permanent, some would be temporary easements. So definitely those impacts will be evaluated in a, in a, in the different alternatives. Okay, thank you. If you think about an option and if you would say, you know, put up like a 10-feet-wide road, I mean bike path next to the road. And if that's totally comes out of, all right, out of right of way, then you know, that's a permanent impact. So then, you know, you, we're going to measure against other alternatives and, and, and the metric, metrics. Will tell which one is more feasible and which one is more economical and also meets the purpose and need of the project.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, well, thanks so much. Thanks Duncan for your participation and thanks everyone for bringing all this forward. It was a great format.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so moving into the next item on the agenda, number five is our continued. LDR work session, continuing the review of the environmental protection standards. Leaving off where. We left off last week, so that would be starting with section 10. We were. Going down through the. The actual draft itself kind of in order. I, I wanted to get a general sense of. Kind of how much, well, I guess first off, I would really love to get to the point tonight where we have kind of collected our feedback and. Can. Get together. What we need to warn a public hearing at our next meeting. I'm concerned if we don't do that, we're gonna. Kind of lose staff power for. A long time and, and I'd really like to have as long of a public comment period as possible to really work through things and make sure everyone, including councils on the same page. So I guess that's. My personal goal, but. And I do want to go through kind of the rest of the sections and make sure that the things in the memo that were changed or set, but. So I wanted to get a sense if people had a whole lot of comments to the draft and felt like we needed a lot of discussion. Or. Cause the, yes, Michael? Go ahead, Michael.
I'll let you finish.
Um, because we have some, some mapping and a little bit of follow-up from last week that I think might be kind of helpful to. Kind of follow up on. The section nine and which resources we were including. Just to kind of show that. So, Michael?
Yeah, that, that was my question. I had two, two matters before we leave chapter nine. That I'd like to, like us to cover before we move on. So do you want to do that now or?
Um. Sure, so. I don't know, I think, I think it. It feels like it might be helpful to look at the mapping that Paul's gotten together for us to kind of get us. On the same page with what this looks like in map format. I mean, I know we had a. Some, a specific vote on kind of adding more resources or not, but. And as part of that, there was a request to be able to really see in the mapping and do some map comparisons to make sure we're all set for a public. Public hearing and being able to really have a, an in-depth conversation with the council about. What's in, what it looks like, you know, where additional development could happen, which resources are being. Protected. And I think that it might make sense to. You know, look at that mapping. And, you know, I think as, as we kind of move forward and. You know, have a meeting with the council. I do want to. Like describe that we do have some diverging opinions on some things. And I think that that's where. It'll be really good to have a conversation with the council about. Priorities and what we want to see and what we want to see specifically in the southeast quadrant as well. Really, and put that out there. So, I mean, I know that there were some concerns about what was in and what was not and. You know, we do have to vote on what would go to public comment. But I think that that means there's a lot of kind of discussion with the council and making sure we're showing things on the map. And can really describe where we're at as well. So. So I, I think, I think Paul would be helpful to look at the maps. You know, because this is a big piece of our public outreach as well as being able to describe what our work has been to this point. And Dan, I think let's hold off on your question about the density because. Possible.
Okay, so I, I'm going to show a couple of sets of maps to show. How, as you'd requested last meeting, how things are looking different. In the proposed regulations from the prior ones as well as related to the comprehensive plan. One thing I wanted to note first though, and Jessica, we can talk about it whenever you'd like to, but. There are some resources, including agricultural ones which. Can be and in the draft planned due to development regulations are weaved in. Either from an incentive perspective or requirement perspective. That's separate from Article 12 because it's part of a PUD. But I would be more than happy to talk about that whenever you are ready to. In terms of, you know, how that piece of it ties in. So if you will indulge me, I've got a couple of sets of maps here and all of this I can make. Public and make it so that you and everyone from the public can see it. It was with the weekly meetings, they just, we just wrapped them up this afternoon. So. So the first one, the first series here, it's a few slides, you've seen maps like these before. Is trying to show the current versus the proposed. And then after we're done with this, I'll, I'll show relationship to the comprehensive plan. At any point here, please feel free to interrupt me. I can zoom in on this map in any places. It's an interactive map. So. What you're seeing here and the color schemes that you're going to see here are orange represent the current. Regulated natural resources. So 100-year floodplain, wetlands, river corridors. And, and stream setbacks. Green in this case is the Natural Resource Protection District. Because of the way that things overlay, obviously there's some NRP that is under the orange. It's just, you can, you have to pick one to see. So this is the current regulations from Article 10 and 12. Added to it here with this slightly lighter green are the land that are conserved in some form or are parks. So it's the Auclair piece. It's the Wheeler Nature Park. It is Red Rocks Park. It's some private development. It's Underwood. It's all things that are either part. It's the Wheeler Nature Park. It is Red Rocks Park. It's some private development. It's Underwood. It's all things that are either parks or conserved. And I know conserved has a lot of different meanings to it. I used a very broad term meaning, not intended to become private development, I guess is the, the simplest description that I can use. This next map here shows a lot more stuff on it. Everything in gray is the built environment. So this is this map that you've seen before of parcels that are either less than four acres in size or they're more than four acres and have a certain amount of lot coverage. This also includes a few areas where there has been development approved but not yet built. We show that as built here. So the white is essentially the areas that are neither conserved nor nor built on in some form. All right, going back. The blue here represents the proposed Article 10 and 12. The dark blue are the hazards and the light blue is the level twos. You see that big splotch at the top. That's the 500-year floodplain area as a level two. Just one second. I got a little pop-up on my screen. All right. I'm going to go through the same sequence here. So this is the conserved land. And this is the built environment over the proposed Article 10 and 12 as you're seeing it today. And then this map is probably the most useful map here. This is showing the existing compared with the, with the draft. So the blue is the draft. The orange is the existing and where you see orange, it's blue under the orange. There's nowhere that it's less. So that's, that's sort of, that's the change that relates to Article 10 and 12. And I think that that was my last slide. I'm just going to just double check.
Well, Paul, some of the NRP green is also covering some of the blue, right?
That's correct. Yeah. So, so in many cases, yes, it's, there, there's a bunch of areas where the blue or the orange are coexisting with the NRP because, you know, the work from 15 years ago that established the NRP was looking at places like the Great Swamp.
So this is one of the big questions that I heard a couple of times at the last meeting was what additional areas do we have protections for? And I think that the blue is really trying to get at that, the additional protected areas.
And just to be clear, if it's outside of South Burlington, we're showing the habitat block, but we're not regulating them. So if you see those couple of wings that go into Burlington and Williston, we're not, we're not yet moving towards manifest destiny for the other towns. Any questions on this one? Again, I'm happy to make this available so that you can look at it in detail yourselves. I did want to note that, you know, from a macro scale, this looks like, you know, it, the, the, the additions of a 50-foot buffer to 100-foot buffer, you know, they, they may or may not look significant on this map, but at the, at the site level, they, they can be, they, they are significant in some cases in terms of addressing some of those habitat questions that you've had as well as, you know, what they, what they do in the land. So I'm going to zoom into one area and just show it as a for instance here. What you're looking at here is Allen Road. And I'm just going to draw on here. So you're going to see my highlighter come across here in a second. That's Allen Road there and here's Spear Street. So I wanted to draw your attention to, you know, this, this blob south of Allen Road. The expansion of the wetlands does, in this instance, you know, have a, have a material effect on a property like this. And, you know, that's, I'm not trying to imply that it's a positive or negative, but just want to show that, you know, with this sort of curves in and out of a wetland, that if the mapping is in fact where it is, it does change what the property is. So I just wanted to flag that, you know, as you, as you play with this, as you look at this, as the public looks at this, you know, to, to make sure to zoom in as well as looking from the citywide, citywide perspective. Any questions before I go to the other one? I have to sort of load a different map, so it's easier to answer any questions about this one before going to the comprehensive plan. Michael?
Yeah, quick one. Whether you can show very clearly the parcel delineation on these maps so that we, it's easier for us to, to, to see where we are.
Yeah, I, I can toggle that on. It's, it's one of these things of what's easier to look at. So from a citywide perspective, it's easier to look at it with, without the parcel lines, but what I can do is, and I can, I can add one more slide at the end of this that shows with the parcel lines. And then when you zoom in, it's a lot, it's a lot easier. So absolutely.
And the other question was you, you sent us a map of the new NRP zoning. Think of it as shown in brown. Would you be able to overlay that with the current zoning so we can see the differences when you get to it?
Yes, I can do that. And that is an item that the, I recommend that the commission decide over the next couple of meetings whether you are intending to make changes to the NRP now or not. It's not in the draft that you have seen because the direction was stick specifically to Articles 10 and 12, but I can understand that that might be something that you choose to advance at the same time. So I can make sure that you've got a map that shows those two things and you can make the call.
Along with that, Paul, just to be clear, would there be additional like language changes or is it a map change?
In that case, it would be a map change only.
Okay. Monica?
Just that, that I would need to understand the pros and cons of making a zoning change like that when we're ready to do it. So because I, I, I don't understand why we would be doing that. So when, when we do have the conversation, can we reserve enough time to make sure we all understand the pros and cons of that rezoning?
Yeah, I guess I thought that we were doing it because it was part of the mapping and part of our discussions about the forest blocks in some locations, we chose to make an adjustment to the NRP edge kind of as part of that forest block discussion. But, you know, it's not, so I don't know. It'd be good to hear from others. Michael and then Duncan?
I, I only asked the question because the map that, that Paul provided was titled changes on new RP zoning outline. And so I don't know, I don't know whether there was anything new or if so, what it was. And that's why I asked if it could be overlaid with what's current.
Right. And I guess that's why I thought it was in there. Duncan?
Yeah, I, I remember when we, we did make some minor adjustments when we went through that exercise where we went through all the different parcels and we made some slight adjustments to the NRP, but I don't remember any major additions or changes to the NRP other than those ones we made in that, that one meeting. And maybe my memory doesn't serve me well.
Those were the habitat blocks, I think. Those were the habitat blocks that we, that we reshape, we reshape.
That's what I was thinking of. Sorry, not parcels.
Right. They weren't, and they weren't necessarily NRP. And that's just where I'm, I just need to understand. I don't understand the pros and the cons of that rezoning. So.
Um, Paul, did you have the other maps or any other questions on these particular maps that? Because this is going to be kind of what I see a big piece of our outreach and discussion as we. Paul Inglos?
Can this be quantified into acres? How many acres of this and how many acres of that?
Yes, we have done one round of it, Paul. Because there's a lot of layers, it's, it's fairly, it's, it's, it's sounds like a simple thing, but there's a fair amount of math that goes into it. So before I go and do it again, I wanted to make sure that, you know, you're, you're comfortable with the draft because it's, it's about a day's work to get those numbers. They're important, but it's, we don't want to do them over and over.
Okay.
I mean, did I, Andrew, did I see it pop up? Did you have a question in the mapping?
I guess a question about the wetlands. So the, we, we've mapped the wetlands and I guess the question is how reliable is that mapping in a sense? Do we know that that area is really protected? I know it was kind of composed of two different layers and our would seem to call it the question accuracy of one of them. And like, is it illusory or is it real? Or like, yeah, that's the question.
We have checked with this. Paul, do you want to?
Yeah, Andrew, that's a great question. So the, um, specific to wetlands, the, the, the mapping in here is really an indicator for a property owner or for the public as to what is, what is potentially out there. Wetlands must be field delineated by an expert. And when it's a class two wetland, that delineation happens with a state wetland person present as well. And so for the purposes of wetlands, th- this map really should be looked as, as an indicator more than anything else. It may be larger, it may be smaller, and it's entirely based on the science when it comes down to the actual regulation.
I mean, do you have any sense of how accurate it is? Like you look at the two different layers and they're really different. Almost like sometimes completely different areas and, you know, it's just, because it's hard to tell how much is really protected without understanding are those maps pretty accurate or way off or, you, you know what I mean?
One thing that we can say, Andrew, is that we are requiring an actual on-the-ground delineation and then we have our pretty strict standards. So you know, what I've often seen is that the wetlands tend to be a little bigger than what's mapped. But I don't know if others had that same experience.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess Jessica, it might be fair to say that wetlands that are closer to water features tend sometimes to wind up being a little bit bigger. Ones that are further away from streams, we, we sometimes find that, you know, the, the aerial mapping that suggested it might have been a wetland might be a little bit less accurate. Is that a fair statement as sort of the broadest way to possibly say it? Okay.
Michael?
So the question, when would this delineation take place? When is a development proposal or at some other time? Because I seem to remember when we were, when Jens Hilker talked to us that he, he said that the draft contemplates delineation of certain resources by the applicant. And he says he would suggest that this may be delineated in advance by the city to avoid misunderstandings and disputes. And that it should be done by an expert from Department of Environmental Conservation or, or some other expert. The question is where is deline-
Sure. So Michael, that would under our current regulations and so far as I know, in other regulatory systems, it is at time of development. And part of that is that for state purposes, for any state permitting purposes, wetland delineations are only valid for five years anyway. And so it, it, the, even if the city were to go and, and do a site-by-site analysis, it wouldn't be valid five years from now. And so the, that, that's done on a case-by-case basis. And when delineations are done, I believe that that is then added into the state database, which makes all of our information better for adjacent properties and things like that.
So the maps, our maps are really just a rough idea. They're, they're only become precise when, when that, when there's a development proposal that might impact it. Right now, we can't really rely on the maps as being very accurate to other. It comes back to Andrew Chalnix's question.
I would say that's an accurate statement, Michael. Yes. For the purposes of wetlands, other things are delineated differently, but wetlands, yes.
Okay, so Paul, this next section is about the comprehensive plan mapping?
Yeah, so commissioners asked last week to see how things might relate to the comprehensive plan. And so I've got a, a series of a couple of slides here looking at the future land use map of the comprehensive plan and then map seven and eight, which I know you've discussed. So this is the future land use map. It's been a couple of years since some folks have looked at it. So just a reminder, it is intentionally fuzzy. That's not, that's not your eyeballs here. The, there's a, there's sort of a ramp in here. This is intended to blend together all the different policies of the city in a broad sense. The green represents very low intensity, primarily conservation. The yellow is lower intensity, primarily residential. The orange is medium intensity toward, moving towards a mix of different uses. The red is higher intensity and definitely a mix of uses. And then the blue is medium-high intensity, primarily non-residential, business parks, the airport, things like that. So just a reminder here. So I'm going to start to walk you through here. So this is, and so what you're going to see is the colors are a little bit different than the last map. I tried to match the colors a little bit here for, to be useful. So this is conserved land over the future land use. So that's the future land use. And here's the conserved and park land. Adding in the Natural Resource Protection District, that's not a huge surprise because the NRP was in existence when you did this future land use map. And here is the Article 10 and 12 work over the future land use map. So you'll see a few areas where there's a very light green that is not covered by this. I'm going to zoom in a little bit. Here just so you can see a little more closely. These are, for the most part, properties that are in the Institutional Agricultural District and are owned by UVM. So what you're seeing in the middle of the screen, for instance, is the Miller Farm. I would say generally speaking, the areas that are in the green in the future land use map but not green necessi- or fully in, in the Articles 10 and 12 are mostly the, those UVM parcels. Moving forward one more here, and I know there's a lot in that map and I'm happy to go back to it. This is again, just looking at that future land use map. Blank again. This is the built environment over the future land use map. So this is the gray over the future land use. So going back one and then looking at this again. And then this shows, this is sort of a whole shooting match together. So this is, if it's gray, it's built. If it's green, it's either conserved or regulated. And then if you see any other color on there or it's the very light green, those are the unbuilt areas and what their designation is in the future land use map. So you know, I'll zoom in right here and say, you know, here's, here's city center in the red. The yellow sort of oddball here is the St. John Vianney Cemetery. So that's kind of a outlier in there, but that's, that's where, that's what those ones are. You see part in the orange over here, you see part of the O'Brien property in there that's orange and red and blue. And then further in the southeast quadrant, this is yellow areas, a little bit of a reddish area around the village. And, and as I said before, the UVM parcels have like in the bottom sort of left-hand corner here, you're seeing the, the Hoard Farm, for instance. So that's sort of the whole shooting match together. I'm going to zoom out and I think I've got, I might have one more slide on this before we go to the other ones. No, the next maps that I have are about the primary and secondary conservation areas. Before I jump forward, is there anything on this one that folks had questions about? I know I'm giving you a ton of information all in one shot here.
So, so part of our kind of test- So, so part of our, um, kind of test and what we need to report on as we kind of present these to the public and city council is kind of consistency with the comprehensive plan. And, you know, I think this was a nice, um, you know, visual to help kind of go along with that reporting. Any questions or comments on this piece?
Okay.
I would just say, you know, when, whatever you do, end up going to the city council with this is extremely helpful and kind of doing a before versus after over this one, um, of articles 10 and 12, would be really interesting. So not for us to see, but for the future presentation.
Okay. Um, all right, moving on to the next one here. So this is map seven, the primary conservation areas. Uh, this, I know this one's a little harder to read. It just is what the map is. So just to orient you, I'm going to zoom in a little bit so that you see what different things are. So in here, the sort of green 1970s crisscross, uh, uh, color, that is, um, wetlands, what are thought to be wetlands. The red are steep slopes. The blue is water features and the blue sort of jagged crosshatch. That's that, um, uh, riparian connectivity that you talked about at your last map, uh, last meeting. There's a couple of other ones on here that I can cover if they come up, but those are mainly what's on there. The purple dots are the rare endangered, uh, rare threatened endangered species. So that's the map itself. And then I'm going to jump straight to, oh, that is my next one. So this shows here, uh, the natural resource protection district and the article 10 and 12 over map seven. So I can zoom in anywhere here, but, um, generally speaking, if you see any red splotches, that's probably just a little bit of a data error because you are covering the same, um, steep slopes. The, um, the main thing that you see that has been, um, sort of updated since the 2016 mapping here is the riparian connectivity. And that's, I know you've had some discussions about the 500 year floodplain and the wetland buffers, but that's one area where this does look a little bit different between that 2016 map and today. All right, I'm going to jump to the next one here and then we'll be two more slides and I'm done. This one is the secondary conservation areas. Uh, this has a whole bunch of different things on it. It has, um, again, the, uh, threatened species are the, the sort of red splotches. The, uh, blue are, the, the deep blue there are source protectioners, which you guys did look at before, and the Champlain Water District felt that they did not need to see regulated. The light green that I'll, that I'll zoom in, that's sort of a top is farmland. And the, um, this sort of, uh, br- um, yellowish green is grassland in here. And then the darker green are different kinds of forest, green and brown. So I'm going to move forward here. You'll see that the green and brown largely, uh, are now covered because that's in your, your habitat blocks. A number of the other areas are also covered. What is a little bit different here? Uh, the grasslands that were in the southeast quadrant are all covered. Uh, there were two areas that were grasslands. Those areas are already, uh, conserved. They were, they're part of the, um, Dorset Farms neighborhood, uh, permanent open space associated with it. So the, the remaining grasslands are up in the top right-hand corner here, and that's all in the Meadowland Business Park. The farm, the, the area that's defined as farmland, and that's, um, you know, using, uh, sort of satellite imagery includes areas that were essentially actively farmed when they were, um, last mapped. And that includes up in the top middle here, the, um, portions of the Hill Farm, as well as, uh, some areas a little further down, um, in what is, um, the Auclair property and parts of what is now proved to be Cider Mill Two. The red crosshatching in here is the last one I wanted to speak about, and that is the prime ag soils. Uh, and I have a different map from the other mapping that I can show if you want to talk about that in detail. But in the southeast quadrant, there's really only a couple of areas that are prime ag soils that are not otherwise regulated. One is right in the middle of the map, um, and those are on some large, some, some couple acre parcels that, um, belong to individual households, um, a- along Dorset Heights. And the other one, uh, larger one is, um, on the, what we call the Marcel Meadows property, which is immediately south of Butler Farms and immediately north of, um, the Claire Solar, Solar Farm. So I think, oh, no, that was, so I think that's all the maps that I've got for you. Thank you for your patience in going through a lot of different maps in a hurry. And I'll make sure that this is available for everybody.
Could you dial?
Yeah, Ted, go ahead.
Could you dial back to the first one, which had the riparian areas? I think it was the first map you had with the psychedelic blue colors?
Yes.
Please?
Yep. Was there anywhere in particular that you wanted me to zoom in on Ted?
Just can blow up the southeast quadrant if you could. So, so.
Give it a second to get a little better. Here you go. Yep.
Okay. So when you see the, the crisscross blue, is that indicative that you can or cannot build in anywhere in that area?
So the blue is from the plan. So as drafted, the blue would not have a regulatory effect in the zoning. So the green would be the areas that are affected. Yeah. So that's, I, and I don't know, um, Jessica, you're, we're welcome to go into a more detailed discussion of that. But that's, that's the sort of, um, brief version of it.
Okay.
I mean, I think we did talk a little bit more in detail at the last meeting, but we didn't have the maps, um, to kind of go along with it.
One thing that would be helpful to understand for those of us that were not on the commission when the last comp plan was developed. What was the, what was the discussion in the planning commission about the fact that they're putting, you know, there's the future land use backed up to that, um, map seven? And, you know, they kind of are showing different things. One says, you know, there's, there's blue area here that we're going to call riparian connectivity. And then map 11 says that's a future higher density, you know, area. Was the, was, was there ever a conversation about those two? Uh, you know, strategically, what the thinking was or?
I guess what I remember from being on the commission was we did significant outreach on the, the fuzzy map, the future land use map, and it was published and sent out and brought in front of the city council multiple times. And, um, so that we did like a significant amount of outreach with. And then the, um, map seven and eight, you know, we essentially like took them from the subcommittee report and, and put them in as something to talk about later is, you know, essentially what I remember the conversation being. We didn't delve into kind of individual items on it or, you know, kind of how that matched up with the future land use map. Because it was, you know, at that time seemed like a, in the future, we'll look closer and see if we want to regulate these things, that kind of a level. You know, and even kind of noted that not even everyone on that committee was in agreement on what was on those maps. So it was, I guess, that was my recollection, more of a, these seem like good things to talk about when we get to them. Bernie, is that, do you remember kind of?
Yeah, I was going to say that's my recollection as well. In addition, um, you know, I don't think there was any, um, delineation or, you know, field checking or, you know, scientific basis for those lines either at the time.
Michael?
Yeah. I wasn't born yet when this was done, so I don't know anything about it. But, um, those maps, I mean, we have to live with those maps because they're referencing the, they're referenced in the LDRs. So we can't just say, well, we didn't know what we were doing at the time. We, we, we have to live with them right now.
Yeah, we acknowledged that at the last meeting as well. So, um, I don't know, any other kind of questions on the maps or if you want to see something in more detail? Duncan?
Yeah, a quick question. I mean, I, I, I see areas obviously where the, the green doesn't extend out to where the blue was. In a situation like that, I'm assuming if there was anything that was going to happen there, that wetland would have to be field delineated. And if that blue area was indeed wetland, that would be protected. Is that, is that not the case?
Yes, Duncan, that, so, so if it's a wetland, then, um, let's say, we'll, we'll take those properties specifically. So let's say it turns out that there's a field delineation and the wetland is 30 feet wider on either side than what was shown, or 100 feet wider. Then the 100-foot buffer that you have established would then be added to the edge of wherever that is found to be. The, um, that's not necessarily the case with the other resources. So for the, um, streams, that's, uh, that would be measured from the top of the bank. And for the 500-year floodplain, if that happens to be in that same area, there's a mathematical calculation based on the, uh, the elevations that somebody would have to demonstrate. But they would show those ones through the, um, through the, the, the elevations that were, that are available digitally.
So if you look overall with these comparisons, which is very, very helpful, and I think it will help with the public as well, it seems like the area that had, where there is, I would call it a discrepancy, but to Duncan's point, it's their water-based. And so it's the, the larger, um, water definitions that will, that will rule in the end anyway. Any other, if you were to, um, to pull out from this area, it seems like this work that was done in articles 10 and 12 and the bits have succeeded in covering most of what is in the comp plan, right? And is there, is there anything else that stands out? There's a little bit of the red hatching, um, the prime ag, but those are, I don't, I mean, should we discuss those? But it seems to me that, that the, these aren't, this work, um, has succeeded in, in what the comp plan was asking, um, for such work to do. Which I would just remind everybody, you know, there was a draft of this back in 2000, whatever it was, 14. And if all of that was just completed, we wouldn't be in this right now. And the maps would have been met back in 2000, whatever year that was. So I think we've finally met the job. Unless there's something else in this map that we can point to where we need to spend some time discussing. Are there any other holes?
Paul, you want to zoom back out a little? And any other commissioner items? I know Paul had his, Paul Engels has his hand up too.
Are you waiting for me to speak?
Sure. I mean, unless others want to like look at holes.
I'm wondering if these maps indicate the changes that were, the changes that have been made. For example, the change to 906 B3. Is this an after 906 B3 map?
Yeah. So we were, um, that's actually the map we were just looking at.
Right, seven, yeah.
Yep. Um, and, um, you know, I think that there's a little difference in like the, the exact definitions of how we've defined the resources so that the mapping isn't, isn't exact. So, um, but this really does kind of articulate the, the differences in the mapping, um, you know, kind of overlaying them.
So just so I'm understanding, when the, the overlaps or the area, the pieces that I see that the new green is not covering, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the blue hatched area that what is here defined as riparian, but in the end, it is, those are the areas that have to be field delineated before any development anyway. And it would then be treated based on our wetlands. Right?
I guess I'd say mostly, Monica, um, and Jessica, you, you might be a little bit more familiar with this, but the riparian connectivity layer that went in here was a layer that was put together by the state several years ago, and is sort of a compilation of a lot of different things. It is the areas that are, I, I believe it was what was called the valley bottoms at the time. And it included sort of areas where the state had not necessarily done detailed mapping as to where the, the edges of the, of the river corridors might be, um, but broadly could encompass those. Later on, that, that mapping has, has since 2015 or 2014, when that's been done, there's areas have been divided into two different areas in this, in the state A and R mapping. So, you know, this, this is part of the complexity, frankly, of that layer is that it, it's something that has, that as a planning layer has evolved. And I don't know, Jessica, if you wanted to say anything more from the water perspective on any of that.
Yeah, I think that, um, you know, there's a few things. It's, it's trying to define some of those flat areas around rivers that might be used by the river system as well as for some habitat connectivity. Our comp plan kind of points to that layer as, um, you know, a way to define where some of that habitat connectivity might be. You know, because we didn't have a better delineation or better kind of definition of where that might be. So what, what we've been talking about for, you know, the last two years was that we wanted something a little more scientific, a little more specific to our land based on something that someone can go out and measure on the ground. You know, so we have the scientific delineations of all the water features that we have in there. Um, and then we also did the Arrowwood study to determine kind of where the more, the most important habitat areas were, um, specific to South Burlington. Because one of the things that Jens Hilke from the state said was that, you know, that was such a kind of high level, broad, kind of coarse delineation, um, you know, if we had the resources to define it better, the habitat better, um, and really kind of connect those, those habitat connectors, you know, that would be the better approach for, for our city if we had the resources to do that. And we did put those resources in and got the scientific study. So, you know, I think that that was a big reason why we did the habitat blocks, to come up with something that was, um, closer to the on-the-ground situation than that kind of statewide layer. So I guess, um, you know, we know, I mean, I guess I've always known as a, as a mapper that the lines weren't going to perfectly match because, but the goals match, in, in my opinion. You know, that was kind of the reason that, um, I don't know, back in '08, 18, I don't know exactly when the date was, but we had this, the subcommittee where we actually like had specific criteria that we were looking at and really defined the goals of what we were looking for. And then kind of came up with the way to do that. So, so, I mean, I acknowledge it doesn't match perfectly on the, on the map, but I don't think that was the goal to have the lines match up. I think it was the, the intent. So let's go with Duncan and then, and then it looks like we have some public comment.
I, I'm going to channel my inner Bernie here. So what do we need to do to move on from this conversation about?
You know, I guess that that's the thing. I'd actually- You know, I guess that that's the thing. I'd actually kind of prefer to hold off on a lot of public comment. The, the whole goal of tonight is to have something that's concrete, that we can really get public comment on. Like, that is the goal. And, and I know that what we put out there isn't going to be perfect, but we, we need to get to a point where we're, we have something that we're presenting to city council. And I think that what we're looking at here is a really great tool. So I mean, I would prefer to not get into a lot of public comment so that we can actually get to the point of collecting it officially. So that is my goal, Duncan. And I, I just felt like, you know, people were asking for more information last week. You know, this was kind of a compilation, what we're going to put out for public comment, you know, with, with our draft. So Bernie?
Yeah, so just, Duncan was channeling me. So what specific do we need in terms of getting through the rest of this?
Yeah.
Are there specific comments or concerns? Are things, questions that Paul needs to have answered? That, you know, and again, with respect to time, it's 8:30, so it would be good, you know, in the next half hour to hour timeframe to be able to get through what we need to get through to try to achieve your goal of having something ready for warning. So I would just encourage that if there's specific things, that that's, that haven't been previously discussed either today or in other meetings, because we've discussed a lot of things in other meetings, and we voted on a lot of things in other meetings. So new stuff that needs to be addressed to get to the end.
And I do think there's a few new things in the packet. So if we kind of can start to get back into the article specifically. Dan, are you up with your density calculation question? Because we're not discussing density or the PUDs. This is literally only the chapter 10 and 12 items and related to that.
Yeah, I just have a quick comment, but you know.
We're hoping to hold off on public comment until it's released next week, if possible.
Okay, but I could, I could just make it Dan, I guess, I just.
Yeah.
The, the only thing I would make as a comment, then I'll save my comment about the regulator, the draft standards for the public comment period. I guess my only comment here, just in the interest of good public policy or all where, if there could be some sort of, you probably already thought of an FAQ section and a sort of a thing of like address search feature, because you know, I'm used to looking at the maps. You guys are used to looking at the maps as well as all of you people who've been following this day in, day out. But the average person might go, oh my God, look at that Rorschach test there and stuff, so.
Yeah, address search is a great idea. Thank you.
People could zoom in and find their house and, oh, okay, you know, that's the woods. Yeah, okay, I understand. That's all. And I'll save my comment for when you guys actually release it.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the effort you guys have been putting in. It was looking good. Thanks.
Hey, Bernie?
Well, I was just going to add to kind of answering Dan's question. One of the things that Paul Engels asked for in the last meeting, which I thought was pretty good, was a kind of a plain language summary of, you know, what we've done and what's changed. And, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but I think we are working on that so that we have something that's less regulatory language and more, this is, you know, we were doing this, now we're doing this kind of thing.
Yes.
Is that correct? So
Yep.
Kind of to Dan's point, there will be something, I hope, provided that will be regulation for dummies.
So Bernie, there will be, there's going to be a one-pager that covers the differences between the two. I'm looking at, and, and maybe another page or two after that, sort of describing the history and, and other things. I haven't yet figured out whether there's an in-between that can be a little more detailed than a one-pager, but not into the regulatory languages. That's a, you know, it's, it's, it's always tough to sort of start to describe things in ways that are specific but not regulatory, because then it just begs regulatory questions. So we'll, we'll figure it out, but we've got a one-pager for sure.
Oh goodness. Monica?
I just was going to say, because I do have comments on the document too, if we had a chance to go through. But, but I do also have a kind of a, a policy one that covered a bunch of them. So when, it had to do with the hat, my habitat block question. So I just wanted a chance to bring that up tonight. I don't know if we do it when we're in section 12, but there are things within, if we want to jump into that.
I guess that's where, let's, let's try to go in order. We do have some people up. Sarah, do you have something related to what we're? I do want to hold off on a lot of public comment, but I know you look very insistent, so. Yeah, and you are on mute, so you can unmute yourself and.
I just said I, I backed off when you said you didn't want public comment, so it's fine.
Okay.
It was, it was a question about the, the mapping and the, the way things have changed on the ground that aren't reflected on the map.
Yeah.
Maps that we saw. They were great maps, but you know, this is a dynamic environment.
Yes, very much so. That's, that is helpful.
Some of them are in great big ways.
So we were going through generally in order, we were kind of at the, I thought we were at the end of section nine. Sounded like Michael had something he wanted to kind of make sure we touched on nine before we moved on. Do you, go ahead, Michael.
Yeah. It was at our last meeting, someone asked you about, about farmland. And you, you made the comment that it's protected under 906C. And that would, that should be sufficient, but I looked at 906C and it says, it only uses the word encourages conservation. So really, there, it's not protected in, in any way at all. And I'm wondering whether we shouldn't change that to required. Because there's a fair, you know, an applicant can then choose from quite a significant menu of plans described in 906C for submission to the DRB. It wouldn't be, it, it doesn't impose a lot of restriction, but encourages provides nothing. Required would, would enable an applicant to look at those options, providing buffer zones between existing agricultural operations, et cetera. And there's a whole bunch of them. I don't need to go into them now, but that's, that would be my question, because it's not, it's not correct that agriculture is, is protected under 906C.
Yeah, I don't think I used the word protected. I think it was acknowledged that it was encouraged. So what I did say is that we were including agriculture in some of the PUD requirements. You know, we're not talking about PUDs specifically, but we have talked about how agriculture fits within those in a couple different ways. And I know, I, I asked Paul to kind of circle back with our consultant, just to kind of, so we could kind of address that, because I mean, I do know it's not in chapter 12, but we haven't like completely ignored agriculture completely. And I think that that's something that we'll want to be able to articulate, kind of where we're seeing some of that in the, not in chapter 12, but other places. So Paul, do you want to?
It's an environmental protection issue, so it must be in, in chapter 12. That's where it belongs.
You know, I, I think it's up for discussion. This is something that I, I do really want to talk with city council about. You know, I know it's a split vote and we, we have something kind of in front of us with some mapping. And I do think that this is something that it's a big discussion. And, you know, a lot of people actually classify agriculture as a land use, not a resource, an environmental resource. So I, I think there's some semantics and definitions there as well. So I'm not saying it's not important. I'm saying that we want to have a real community discussion about it and.
You want to discuss with the council when we have this joint meeting at some point?
Yes, yes. I think that it's a resource that's, you know, it's on the map. We, we just talked about that. And, you know, we're talking about putting it into the, some of it into the PUDs as well.
The other one was to do with prime ax oil, prime ax oils, which we voted last week not to include in Article 12. But I've been using the CCRPC map that was prepared with South Burlington as a guide. And for a long time, since it's got everything in it, and it's much easier to use than some of the newer maps we have. And that shows level two resources as, shows the level two resource, which is prime ag, shows it been there. And it's also regulated under Act 250 and requires mitigation if it's used for anything else but farming. So we, we ought to have it in, we, to be consistent, we should have it in our, in our level two resources as well. We should have prime ag in there. And it doesn't make any sense not to. We have an example right now where the city's building a football field down in South Village, and they're going to have to mitigate because there's prime ax oil. So people should know that in, when, when they look at Article 12, they should know that prime ax soils are protected and regulated. So that, that's why I think it should be in our level two resources.
Is good. So, and what you said about it being regulated at the state level with Act 250 is, is true. And it is part of our discussion that we've had in the past as well. So that is one way that it's regulated. It's not at the city level, but any larger development would need to do that, that mitigation with the state permitting already. And then, so we did have the vote on this, and I'm, I've asked staff to follow up on it. So we are talking about it in order to have this conversation. But let's, let's kind of get the staff report on how we're including it in the PUDs before we talk more.
I don't understand why you're going to the PUDs all the time. We're on Article 12. We're here to develop environmental protection standards, not building standards. I mean, that, that's what we, we're trying to come to.
What is, what, what's happening here, guys? Can you? What I'm saying, Michael, is we already had the vote to not include it. But as a courtesy, I thought it would be important to follow up on how we have talked about including it in the larger land development regulations. If you don't want to hear how we've talked about it with PUDs, we don't need to. And we'll talk about it with the city council when the time comes, but otherwise, I think we're going to move on.
I'll leave it at that, except that a football field is not a larger development. It's just a piece of grass.
Okay, so it sounds like Michael's not interested in hearing about the PUDs. So maybe we don't need to hear about that now. We can save that discussion for when we talk with the city council. Okay, so moving into section 10, chapter 10, were there any other items in the first piece of that, which is the?
I just had a really small one. And I mentioned in the definitions, adding historic sites, because it wasn't in, in Article 2. And the reason I did is because there is this 1001GN3.
Monica, I can, I can cut you off quickly and say that it, I verified it is defined. It's just not, the definition wasn't changing. So it's in our, it's in our definitions. You're all set.
Anything else in chapter 10? There was the, there were a few notes in the CCRPC memo. I believe they were all items that we had kind of previously talked about with consolidating the river corridors and stream buffers. Okay, so that's all the floodplain standards and the river corridor standards. Anything else? Okay, then. Let me keep scrolling. So I'm going down the, the LDR kind of markup in order. So we went past the river corridor standards. I had, there were a few times actually where fencing was, was referenced in there. I just wanted to make sure that somewhere we had a standard that fencing wouldn't block animals.
I don't think we do, Jessica, but that's a great point, and we'll, we'll make sure to include that. Typically, what we've, what the DRB has required slashed encourages things like split rail fencing, which provides a visual delineator to make sure that the 14-year-old kid who's mowing the backyard doesn't keep adding to it and adding to it. But that's a great catch.
So yeah, protection for our water features from mowing, but not an animal block. Bernie?
Yeah, just really quickly on the fencing. So Paul, I would just recommend that you also check with, and I'm sure you already have at least once, but with Public Works, because there's really two separate issues with fencing. One is, you know, it's good to have the wildlife be able to pass through. On the other hand, if you have stormwater ponds with steep slopes, it's a safety issue for small children. And so I know that, you know, from a safety perspective, having a fence that, that kids can't get through is necessary in some cases. So I'm sure, you know, the stormwater people can provide much more light than, than I can here briefly. But, but there are kind of competing interests there, so.
Yeah, and so, so Bernie, thank you for bringing that up. Just quickly on that. The, the purpose for why it's in Article 12 today is, as I was describing, we've, we've shown, we've seen a lot of success in the last 10 or 15 years of making sure that when the DRB establishes a wetland buffer, that it's adhered to by having something that physically is blocking, you know. Unlike, you know, historically, a neighborhood like Butler Farms, something like that wasn't done, and everybody mows straight to the, to the, to the stream, and it's just impossible to catch up on. On the subject of stormwater, the regulations right now are silent on that subject to give the Public Works Department, as they're going through designs and individual reviews of private development, the latitude to sort of look at the safety issue on a case-by-case basis, rather than sort of dogmatically saying it must be in or it must be out. And, and that seems to have worked pretty well. Obviously, you know, not every single citizen is happy, but, but generally speaking, the ability to be a little more nimble has been helpful.
Okay, Duncan?
Yeah, just a real quick feedback. I thought the section on, section 10 looked good. The two diagrams you have in there, I don't know if it was just me, but I found them a little hard to follow based on the language. I don't know if there's somewhere they could be done a little bit more illustrative. They were just a little hard to to find. The, the ones about the, the setback and then the shadow. And maybe it was just me, but I found them a little hard to follow. I don't know if we could simplify them for the public.
Are these straight out of the, the state guidance? Paul, you're on mute.
I believe they are. They're, they're what was given to us last year when you put in the river corridor standards. It might be worth, I'm happy to check in with, with Taylor. Now that you've combined the river corridor standards and your stream standards, it may be that it's, this is sort of the shadow, the whole shadow idea may be somewhat superfluous at this point anyway. But I'll, I'll see if we can find some better graphics for that. I, I do appreciate that. It took me a few times reading it to get it.
Yeah. Okay. Monica?
In section E of, we're, we're in 12 now, right? 1203. In section E about the waivers and modifications, I know we've talked about this before, but just please clarify and remind me. Section E2, the DRB may grant waivers in regard to wetlands. And why are we? Or, or yeah, why for wetlands do we allow the waivers?
Sure. So two things. One, it says a waiver or modification there and that's, we're likely changing that to modification, not waiver, because it's not just a blanket. But I didn't get a chance to circle back with our PUD consultant, who's the one making sure that we're clean on that language. So just to be clear, it's not a waiver. But to your, to your more specific question about what, what's being allowed. So this is the section that you're asking about. So in this instance, this only applies to the city, to class two wetlands in the city center form-based code district and to class three wetlands. Those are the only circumstances where the board would have an authority for a modification with those standards, which is a substantial restriction from the current standards. And that was something that you all had discussed of in city center. There may be reasons why, you know, if you've, if you've established the goal of that being the, the urban area, that if they can meet all the the water quality impacts, that, that, that's a trade off that you were willing to allow. And then the class three wetlands, in terms of rank order, you, you'd said no, no modifications to the class twos, but class threes, if they can demonstrate those criteria, that that would be acceptable.
Okay, anything else on 12.01, the general protection or 12.03, wetland protection items? Okay, so then the next section is the habitat blocks. So, no, that's not. Okay, yeah. Habitat blocks, 12.05. Michael?
Well, let's get into it first because I just was going to say we haven't talked about habitat block buffers, but I'm guessing it'll come up in this, in this conversation.
Are you saying you want to do something above? I mean, to this point, we don't have a buffer around the habitat block. Michael, did you want to follow up on that?
A suggestion anyway, that perhaps we, we should be guided by the Arrowood Study and Report, which is very strongly the importance of supporting habitat in the success of habitat blocks. And while it's not practical, because those supporting habitats that they show are huge, expansive. So probably not practical to use them. But a buffer of, say, 300 feet would go a long way to satisfy that requirement for some sort of double up as supporting, as supporting habitat. And at the same time, the, the required no encroachment buffer around habitat blocks to make them work as habitat blocks. So just use it, them as a guide, but maybe look at 300 foot buffers wherever it's possible. Obviously, it's not going to be possible everywhere because of the location of, of a habitat block. But I would suggest that we use that as a starting, see where we can, where we cannot accommodate a 300 foot no encroachment buffer that doubles as supporting habitat.
Monica?
Well, so to that, because can we all, can we just refresh our memories about habitat blocks? Within each of the habitat blocks that we have mapped, we have cores that are, have been defined within. And then the, and then the habitat blocks that we have mapped include area outside of the core to protect it. And that's what the Arrowood's habitat block lines were based on. And that's what our maps include in full, except for those few areas that we went through and specifically looked on specific parcels about what seemed to make sense, right? So within the habitat blocks that we have, was there, did that, did they define? One of my questions was can we define what a habitat block is? And I know Paul has thoughts on that. But that's the kind of information I do think would be helpful for the community to understand. But like every habitat block includes a core, which is basically this, and it includes the, Michael, what did you call it? The transitional around it? So if you could just remind us again of how the contents of that.
The core is a simple measurement, if I remember correctly. It's, you know, X hundred feet.
Right. I was asking Paul, like based on what we put in the maps, what, exactly, what was the?
So, so the core, Michael is correct. So, so when, so if you remember, just briefly going back to the Arrowood Study, they identified 26 different habitat blocks. And then they used about 10 different metrics to try to evaluate their quality. And one of the metrics that they looked at was how much of the habitat is at least 100 meters or 300 feet away from the edge, i.e. at least 300 feet away from a house, a road, et cetera. And the larger the amounted area that was separated from the edge of this, the higher score it got as having a greater core. So that's what that was to sort of try to separate out, you know, imagine a habitat block that has sort of, it weaves in and out of five acre house parcels versus one that's one big circle. And that, that's, so that's, it's an indicator of quality. So that's where that comes from.
So if it, if Michael's, I mean, I guess my comments about this section connect to what Michael's talking about, but I do think that our current habitat blocks do include that, you know, 300 foot buffer, if you will, because it's part of how they defined it.
And, well, yeah, I wouldn't say it's defined as having a buffer. I would say it was defined as including transitional forest areas. So for example, there may be one area where there's mature forest and then it goes straight to farm, it goes straight to grassland. In that case, the edge of the forest block is the edge of the trees. In other cases, there's succession going on. There, there's, you know, something that was a farm field in the 90s now has, you know, 15 foot tall shrubbery. That, those transition areas in, did make the cut in, in, in some of Arrowood's work. And so you could call that a transition, you could call it a buffer, but it's not a mathematical buffer because in cases where mature forest hits grassland, it's the edge of the mature forest. Does that make sense?
Yes, but here, so here's my, so my policy question for everyone is this. Since habitat block is a new thing that we are introducing and we are, it's not coming from the state, we're, we're creating this. I, I mean personally, I think some, within the definition in Article 2, some mathematical information would be very beneficial just for people to understand, you know, a certain number of acres, certain core forest of, you know, so some, some of that personally, I think should be in the Article 2 definition. And then secondly, based on, once that definition is, is articulated here, that if the mapping that we've created happens to have left one out, I am not saying that it has, but if the community says, hey, based on that definition, I think your map is missing something. I think that there should be a way for the community to bring that to us as a petition. I mentioned it in an earlier meeting, but this is the section it relates to. And it's hard to, it's hard to know what the planning commission should accept as a petition if we don't have a definition that that petition needs to meet in order for us to consider it. So it's a policy conversation. Do we add a more mathematical definitive description of habitat blocks? Or not? And do people like the idea of, like we did with the form-based code, we have the subcommittee so that if there is something that happened in city center that needs to be discussed, it can go to the subcommittee before the entire planning commission assesses it. So can there be a structure like that established? And do we recommend that within Article 12? I, I don't know.
That's a good question, Monica. It sounds complicated. But you know, I think your idea of adding to the definition of habitat blocks, I know there were a few things like 20, more than 20 acres. You know, had the core, I think we want to make sure the core habitat is defined. I think we mentioned that last meeting when we went through the definitions, making sure there was a core habitat definition. I mean, I guess I'm not inclined to create a whole petition system because it sounds complicated. But I think if, if people brought forward that there was one missing, I mean, that's the kind of thing that this public comment period is for, you know, to look at the mapping. And if, if for some reason we've missed something, then you know, we have, we have resources to find, I guess. Duncan?
Yeah, I seem to remember, we had that very thorough meeting where we went through each of the habitat blocks and we kind of went through each one and, and set the, the boundary for them. And I, I don't remember, did we, did we really talk about buffers then? Or were we thinking that was part of the forest, what you were just describing, Monica? That, that, that's my memory when we talked about a buffer, it was the outer part of the forest, not the core. But this gets, this gets to the point you were just talking about is having it thoroughly defined.
Yeah. Bernie? And then Michael?
Yeah, so a couple of things. Again, my recollection on the habitat block discussion, a couple of things. And I was just looking at the regs here to see if they were covered and they are. You know, when Arrowood did their study, it was a, it was a drive by window kind of thing. And so when we looked at defining the habitat blocks, we talked about, you know, shrinking them, expanding them, doing different things. And what we essentially agreed to do was use the mapping that Arrowhead had provided. And we then added, you know, there were some fingers and stuff that we added as we went through that. So we had pretty much nailed that down. And, you know, looking through the regs, and I'm on 1205 habitat blocks. You know, we do, the applicant can go to the DRB and modify the mapping. And I think that, you know, we had talked about that and, and, you know, with the ability that because it was a windshield survey, to go out and be able to actually, you know, delineate it on the ground. We also have language in here, and I remember talking about it, invasive species. And Paul, your recent discussion on kind of the creep out of the woods into the field. We have language on being able to remove invasive species and we added that in there specifically to address that. So I kind of feel like we have the habitat blocks pretty well defined based on the Arrow, Arrowood study. Arrowhead, Arrowood. We have it pretty well defined. And we also have some latitude for people to do a, a field delineation and tweak things as necessary. So I'm pretty comfortable where it's at.
Can I, so Michael did have his hand up first and then Monica. Michael?
In, in going through the drafts, all the comments that we made, whenever there was a reference to habitat block buffers, there's a comment that this is to be, still to be discussed. And it never has been discussed until now. Now we're doing it. So that was my, the reason I have this expectation that we will come to grips with it in, in this or the next session. You know, I've also looked at, I think I sent you the, an article called "The Science Behind the Need for Repairian Buffer Protection." And I think when Jens Hilker addressed us, he said that repairian network buffers predictive of the health of local species and the larger the buffer, the healthier the species. And all the forest blocks in South Burlington ought to be a focus of preservation and the repairing areas are vitally important, though some have already been encroached upon. That was his comment to the, to the commission. So I don't think we've done our work on it yet.
Sarah, how about you? Go ahead. We haven't.
I'm, I'm going to be very brief. I just, I think what you're talking about, I'm just looking at the Arrowood Report, page nine. I think what you're talking about is supporting habitat, which they make clear is outside the habitat block itself, which is in turn outside the core. So the supporting habitat is that edge area, in some cases, connecting to habitat blocks, but not always. That extra area of scrubby, messy land where rodents run around and provide food for the guys who live in the forest. That's all I wanted to say.
Monica, you're.
Well, just, but that, but wait, does, do you have it open right in front of you, Sarah, that page nine? Does it say that it's outside of the habitat block? Because I thought it was part of the habitat block.
I'll read it if you can indulge me.
Sure. Yeah, because I would read it if I had it in front of me.
Supporting habitats adjacent to habitat blocks, but not meeting the requirements to be included in the block itself may include streams, ponds, wetlands, shrublands, agricultural land and orchards. These contribute to a, to a habitat block by providing a range of tangential habitat elements that benefit wildlife. And it goes on.
Thanks, Sarah. Monica, a jivo?
Well, so tied to that, I think that within the habitat blocks, though, outside of the core is some of that, that area that was disguised. I mean, in addition, there is outside of the habitat block. But again, I think that the habitat blocks that we have, as Bernie points out, that are on the map that are defined, do have a core plus. I do think a definition would be helpful. And Paul, you gave me some thoughts on why it's tricky to put a very precise thing in. But I also just wanted to say to Bernie, my comment is not about changing the shape of what is mapped. My comment is simply about, since this is a new map and it is a drive-by study, as they said, just if there is another parcel that is not mapped, but that happens to meet all of the requirements, it just seems like we need to have that definition there so that people can bring that to us and not bring to us every three acre little patch of something that they want to protect. You know, it's, I would see why one would want to, but if we can be clear about what our definition is, it will help people decide if they have something to bring to us or not. So, but Paul, what was your concern about having a precise definition?
Well, I think my comment to you specifically, Monica, on that was you had asked about, the, the Arrowood Study points out that in order to qualify for one of their habitat blocks, it had to be at least 50% in trees, in, in forest. And one of the things that I, I wanted to be mindful of was that the definition of, of a forestry practice in Vermont, which is exempt from local regulation, is actively managed forests. And so somebody has the right in Vermont to remove trees as a forestry economic oper, operation. They can't turn it to lawn. It does have to be, you know, continually regenerated. But if you were to define it as being, must be at least 50% trees, and then a large landowner did a forestry operation and it brought it down below 50%, you might be in a circumstance where somebody makes a claim to the DRB that it's not a habitat block any longer. And, and I don't think you want to be in that position where you've defined yourselves sort of out of a definition. So that was my, that was going to be my point there. Jessica, would this be a good point to, to sort of take a half step back with some of these sort of ideas around additional resources that? ideas around additional resources that on a case by case basis might be relevant to a site?
Yeah.
Okay. So I know that we're talking about Article 10 and 12, but I think it would be useful for me to take just one minute here and, and talk about the role that a PUD could play here and the policy question that you will then sort of wrestle with. A conservation PUD, when it originally was conceived of, the idea was that wherever a conservation PUD takes place, that you would be protecting 70% of that land. And if, say, 50% of that land is wetlands and other hazards and forest blocks, then you'd still have, excuse me, habitat blocks, you'd still have 20% of the land that would, in order to qualify as a conservation PUD, would need to be found and protected. That's a place where you can put in the things in the order that is important to the city of whether it's additional buffer to a forest block, or it's additional buffer to a water feature, or it's agricultural soils, or whatever you may choose. That's an area where you can add in these resources. Thus far, you have decided that conservation PUDs are an option. You could choose, if you like, to have certain areas of the city where that is the requirement, regardless of the amount of natural resources that are present. So that's a policy way that you could go. And then, you know, you're not necessarily saying, in all circumstances, that resource must be ultimately protected. What you're saying is 70% of the most important things on that property must be protected. I think that the big policy question for you all, though, and, and I would encourage you maybe to have this conversation with the city council at a macro level is choosing to have 70% of a property's resources protected, and we're really talking about areas outside of the NRP, is an important policy question for what you all want, what the city council wants for the future of the city. What do you want to see in these areas? You'd previously said, well, maybe it could be a traditional neighborhood, maybe it could be a conservation PUD. If, if ultimately the, the choice of the planning commission and councils to allow both, then that's, that's perfectly fine. But they are different policies for the future. And so, you know, maybe this is sort of at the core, as, as I hear, you know, as, as I listen to your discussions about what resources to protect and which ones not to, I, I wonder whether, you know, as you've moved from the really key natural resources to ones that are a little bit more aspirational, might be my term, whether what you're really talking about is a big picture question of, of, of the form and shape of development in some parts of the city. So I guess I just wanted to share that as a note to you on all these different resources. And I, I would, you know, I'd love to see that question resolved to the best extent possible as part of your overall work here. You know, so that for the community, that's as clear as possible going forward in one year, two years, five years, et cetera. So those are my big thoughts for the night.
Ted, you looked like you wanted to follow up on that. Ted?
Just quickly, how would you go about identifying? I mean, what criteria? That's something that we would do, the Natural Resources Committee, I mean, I would, one.
Do you mean in terms of which ones are most important, or which areas of the city?
Well, which area of the city, I thought it was.
Yeah, I mean, I guess from, from the which ones are most important perspective, I think we have a draft list that we had looked at with conservation PUDs. We can bring that in front of you. I think that having the Natural Resources Committee would be really valuable. In terms of which parts of the city, you know, the, the sort of good news, bad news of that is from the maps that we saw earlier in, in the evening, there's not really that many areas that we're talking about. And maybe this is something where if the commission and council wants to look at it, you can look at, you know, where, where do you have infrastructure that supports it versus where do you not have infrastructure that supports it? You know, where, and are there contiguous areas that make sense to be in one direction, you know, adjacent to existing neighborhoods? And, or not? So I, I think that you could have a fairly focused discussion if you wanted to go in that direction and say, you know, the Southeast quadrant doesn't have to be a single place. It can be more than one place. But, you know, I, I think through this whole process, there has been sort of a, a tension on what's, what's the overall goal. So.
Yeah, I think that's a great place to add additional buffer space. And, you know, we had already put agricultural land on that, that list, the draft list. But, you know, when we look back at it, you know, I think we can better define that.
Yeah, yeah, because I think buffer maybe in, in a particular block wouldn't be quite as necessary as another one, though. It's some, some certain forest blocks might, or habitat blocks might be more conducive to a bigger buffer as opposed to blanket statement that it's going to be X number of feet, no matter where. So, you know, customization.
Michael?
Just to, just suggesting that I, that, that we have some magic number. I just said that, you know, there are places where you can't have, you might not be able to have any at all because of what's contiguous. But it just might never get 300 feet, so it's, it's, goes with habitat block by habitat specific to each one, because each of them has different characteristics. So I'm not suggesting a blanket number.
Well, I, I guess in the interest of moving forward, I would suggest maybe not including additional buffers in the draft for public comment. I guess. Just to be able to kind of move forward.
I agree.
You what? Sure, I, I guess I'll, I'll make an official motion to, in the draft for public comment, not include additional buffers around habitat blocks that are outside the defined edge of the mapped habitat block.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Paul?
Just to be clear, this, this is not precluding any work related to planning developments, conservation PUDs, that kind of thing, right? You're just talking about Article 10.
Right, I'm only talking about Article 12, specifically the habitat block section, because I, I do think that it would be a good place to include additional buffers in the PUDs as additional resource land or that kind of a situation that you described.
Okay.
Well, I was just going to comment, but, you know, if anybody, if the language that Jessica proposed is satisfactory, or whether anybody would like to tweak the language of the motion before we vote on it.
I guess to that, Bernie, what I would ask is, and maybe it doesn't fit within this motion, but, and maybe it's a separate motion. Is there any more descriptive language about what a habitat block is then? Because the only descriptor in here, besides some of what the contents are, is that it is as demarked as on the Natural Resources map. It doesn't say Arrowheads, it doesn't say comprehensive study, it doesn't say evaluated based on 10 different characteristics. It just says as demarked on the Natural Resources map. So.
It includes more than that. I mean, it's a whole paragraph. But, but it is true, it refers specifically to our map because we did make adjustments to it. So. But there are.
There are smaller, there, there are five acre parcels that will meet this definition, except for the fact that it's not on the marked map. So it's, it's just explaining to people what is on, why were those marked versus something else? That's maybe smaller. It, maybe it doesn't fit in this motion. But that is mine, I think that that would be helpful to people. So I don't, I agree with not changing. I agree with your motion, but I wish that we could better define what the habitat block was within that.
Paul?
So, so I guess, you know, in terms of like explaining to the public, there's nothing wrong with, with a description in the memo that accompanies it about where this comes from. I think that's a great idea, and I think it should be in there, and, and certainly in the planning commission report. My concern about putting it in the actual regulations is that the commission has made some policy adjustments from what Arrowhead gave. You shrank it, you grew it in certain areas. And so if you were to say, as drawn by Arrowhead, then somebody will come in regulatory perspective and say, it's bigger, it's smaller than what Arrowhead did. And then, and then that opens up a whole new set of problems. That's why it says as drawn on your map. But I, I 100% agree that discussing the source of that in, in, as to how you came to your policy is really important.
Okay, any, any other on the motion, Michael?
Yes, a quick question. Monica had proposed earlier that we a well, a well-defined, a well-worded definition. And if that's done beforehand, then this can tie back to, to that definition.
Paul?
I just have one more thing before you vote on your motion. If ultimately you decide in the conservation PUDs to have some of these aspirational things we spoke about a few minutes ago, Michael's point of describing them at that time in Article 12, so one, a person can know where to look, would be a good idea at that time. They wouldn't be independently regulated, but they'd be regulated through a conservation PUD, and I would recommend at, at that time to define it there so that it's one-stop shopping. So I just wanted to sort of acknowledge that, that with this motion, if you go in that direction, I would likely come back to you whenever you get to that and say, and I'd like to propose an edit to add this to Article 12, in that manner.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of not adding buffers in the way that it was worded in the motion. So I, one, two, three, four, and all who against the motion? So Ted, Michael, Paul. Okay. So then.
Can I ask a clarifying? I'm sorry. Paul, your, your request to redefine, though, and then alter 12 would be before we make our, there would be like a, you would do that before we make our final? I mean, this is going to public comment that we.
Right, so you, the commission has not decided ultimately whether you're going to put PUDs in with the same round, or whether you do Article, the environmental protection standards on their own. That's what's going to determine whether we add it in now or later. So once you make that call, we'll either add it in or add it as a future round. But that, that would be my recommendation on that.
Bernie?
I'm going to modify that just a little bit, Paul, based on my memory, and maybe I'm completely wrong, wouldn't be the first time. I thought we had decided that we were going to proceed with all the environmental stuff and try to get it done in the city council, because we recognized that the PUD stuff was going to lag behind. And that ultimately would be the city council's decision as to whether they want us to, to hold everything up and do it together at the end. But that, but that we were going to focus on getting this stuff done and through public comment and to them.
Yes, up until that last two words. So through public comment, yes. I, I don't know that you had decided whether you would pass it along to council or not.
Maybe it was part of our discussion when we meet with them.
Right, and, and having sat through their discussion from a couple of weeks ago, I think that there's a couple of different viewpoints on, on what they're, what they might be looking for. So I think that's a, a ripe discussion for you all to have with them about what, what they'd like to see.
Yeah, but I think moving forward and getting their feedback is really important. Michael, and then Duncan?
Yes, my understanding is similar to Bernie's. I think we were given the guidance by the council to finish Article 12 through public hearing and then hand it off to them, to the council. And then we could return to Article 15.
Okay, well, it doesn't change our action for tonight or anything before a meeting with them. So I, but I agree. I think getting out for public comment, having a joint meeting with the city council, getting feedback, having our public hearing with the intention of having it completed and handed off. Duncan?
Yeah, I seem to remember, so if we give it to council, they can decide what they want to do with it. But they could sit on it until they get the PUD stuff and release it all at the same time? Is that, that's their purview, or that's their decision?
Yes, so once they get it, they have, they essentially have a year during which they can take action on what you've given them. After a year, it's, your action isn't, isn't valid. But, you know, I've heard nothing about any interest, anything near there. I'm just talking about what the statute says. So they can, they can sit on it, they could warn their hearing on it. If they were to decide to hold on it and then to receive your second part, there would be a little bit of, you know, it's, it's 95% matching, but there's a little bit of rewording that would need to take place. So we'd have to make sure that that's clean at that time. But yes.
Monica?
In prep for the city council meeting, when they're going to get what we just voted on to pass them, I do think the buffer conversation is very important. And to, even to what Michael was just saying, it's not necessarily an absolute add 300 feet to everything. Can you give some advice on what, and I'm going to say we, because I'm going to support bringing that to that conversation, even though I voted to continue with this one. Can you give advice on what is the best way to have? What, what can we bring to that conversation to make that very clear? It almost seems like should, should a few of us meet to consider what a buffer extension might look like? Is it on a habitat, is it on a habitat block by habitat block basis? It's, there's only so many of them. What could we do to to make that part of the conversation productive and decisive in that meeting?
I don't know that you're looking, whether you're looking for my opinion or not, Monica, I don't have a vote. But again, you know, based on what I've been hearing of various different buffers, you know, I, I'd encourage the conversation to be sort of a big picture one with them. You know, what, what is the balance? What's the appropriate overall balance? Rather than, you know, necessarily asking their specific feedback on a buffer of this one habitat block or a addition of a stream buffer of X, or this one agricultural soil. You know, to, to have the conversation be about the, the, the big picture of what is, what is the objective, especially in the Southeast quadrant, but really everywhere. So that would be my mostly unsolicited advice, and then I'll see the floor to those who are actual vote deciders here.
Michael?
Yeah, I was just, just looked at the checks and I, I don't think we've actually read out any of these comments. What are you planning to do with? what's, what's in the checkbox this evening?
I was hoping to take public comment after we finished our draft, which is what I said earlier. Cause I mean, which is what we have been telling the public for months that we're trying to get something together for comments. There have been some people who have been holding off on their comments for us to finish and other people have been kind of commenting along the way. So that's my recommendation for tonight is to get to next, get through tonight. So we have something for our next week to have for public comment.
And, and when will tonight end?
I would prefer to end soon. Um, is there, are there other comments or kind of big picture things that you'd like to see differently? Um, and the rest is chapter 12?
I think specific Paul needs.
Yeah. Or is there anything, Paul, you think you need to get feedback on from in here? I mean, everything was in the memo. So.
I had one specific thing in 12, three, and I can't find it now.
12, three, you already brought up that waiver.
A different one. It, I know that it's just the way something is worded in here about it in 12, 12, 3D standards for wetlands, Paul. There's language like develop, okay, and 12, oh, five. Oh, this is a 12, oh, five. No, it's not. It's the pre, it's 12, oh, three, D, one. And it just, it starts off by saying development is generally prohibited. And then it can go on, but I wonder why it sounds so vague? Is it necessary to have big language like that? Is generally prohibited?
Um, so great question, Monica. I did actually have that exact question for Taylor a few weeks ago, and that's in the purpose statement for the wetlands as the, as the introduction. And, and it's really, the intent of that is to frame the discussion for the DRB. It's not the standard itself. The standards are later on, but it's as an applicant, what's your mindset that you should be going into? Generally speaking, don't touch wetlands. There are some exceptions below that you can look at. That, that's, that's what it's intended to do sort of to that. You know, I, I know it sounds vague, but it's, it's also fairly clear in the sense of it's providing an overall mindset. Does that make sense? From a, because alternatively, you know, to, to the, to the point that Paul Ingalls brought up earlier about plain English. Alternatively, you dive directly into the very exact standards and you have to read every word to say, so what's the city trying to accomplish? So that, that's, that's what the purpose statement, and that's why it's a little bit broad, because you know, you can either be precise or you can be a little bit broad and, and those are challenging to be plain English on it.
It just seems to me like the plain English would be you can't with very few exceptions versus generally, so just not a big deal, but that, food for thought.
Yeah.
Okay, Michael?
Now, to pick up on Monica, there's a lot of areas, a lot of places in, in the draft where language is very wishy-washy, if you like.
Okay.
So, uh, but yeah, one has to read, and I don't know which of you have, I haven't yet. You've got to read all 350 pages of these drafts line by line. Otherwise we'll never get to understand it clearly and we'll never know that we did a good job.
So Michael, I'll take that comment to heart. And as we do the legal review, we'll be checking that exact thing because the, the specific guidance to Taylor was, you know, let's be sure that when it ultimately comes down to regulatory language, that it's very clear. Um, so in, for instance, I know that you had expressed some concern about can a plan unit of development waive everything that we just talked about? So in Article 15, there's a line added that specifically states that the, under the current PUDs, not the future stuff, but the current PUDs, nothing that get, that enables the board to give flexibility in order to, through a PUD is intended to mean that it gives you anything that you didn't already have in Article 12. So that kind of specificity, it, we, we are trying to scrub it for that. So we'll, we'll, we'll try to hit it again.
I'll try and give you a few examples so that you
Please do.
Great. Any, anything else or anything else, Paul, you specifically wanted to address?
Um, I do think, I don't, if, if commissioners don't want to get into too much of a discussion on it, I do think I, just for the record, I, I do want to verbalize what I, that, that I included a little section in the memo talking about where we're at with rare threatened endangered species. It's a complex subject. Um, I'm very thrilled to say that I know Ray Gonda is on this evening. The natural resources committee is thinking about some, some creative solutions as to how to focus the subject area, how to, how to think about it. So there may be a, a future project here. At this point, the staff recommendation is to, is to only really address them as if somebody is proposing something that will require a habitat disturbance assessment, given that for the most part, not across the board, but for the most part, you've covered rare threatened endangered species by protecting for habitat blocks, by protecting wetlands and all those kinds of things. So, um, we, to get to a finish line would be still a fair amount of work and we know that you want to have something on the books here. So I just wanted to sort of verbalize that for the, for the minutes and the record that.
Thank you. Yeah. And thanks to Ray and the committee for, for looking into that. That was really the only thing on my list that I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of. Anything else? Are we ready to wrap up and have this kind of packaged up? For
I had one question for Paul on, on Taylor's memo. That next time we do it, the language that's changed can be identified easily in, in the main document instead of having to search to search for his suggested, his changes, suggested changes, because it's a tedious job to find.
Understood, Michael. And, and he and I did have some discussion about that. It's, it's really tricky to figure out. Do we, do we show what changed in the last draft? Do we change, do we show what changed from prior? I'm happy to sort of go back and look to see what do we have on file? I did try very hard to keep each version of things so that it can be tracked. It's just very difficult to sort of go version by version. But if there's specific areas or if you want to see, I, I have just about every version of this since whenever we started out there. So.
Okay, but so all his listed, listed changes are in the latest draft?
That's correct. So everything that he described in his memo is included into the latest draft. So that's, that's why I asked him to put that memo together so that he was enumerating it. You know, if he changed a word here or there, he didn't go to every single word, but anything of substance he called out there for you.
Okay, any? Anything else? And you know, I think, Michael, that's actually a really good comment. And in this case, having the clean version and a red line version was helpful. But sometimes as we're working through this, it's almost like maybe commissioners need the, at least an access to an interim version, you know, sometimes. So. I, I don't have anything else on my list for this. So I mean, if there's anything else people want to see changed prior to next week.
Yeah, I was just wondering what our next step is exactly on this. So we're
Yeah. So I mean, the idea is that Paul would kind of incorporate the things we talked about tonight and the last meeting into kind of a, a final draft along with the reporting that would go out for public comment. And then we would look at that at our next meeting. And you know, if, if we're ready, then warn it for public comment. And then we can provide additional information. Um, you know, I think the mapping would go, be available for the public as well. And then, you know, we would do preparation for a meeting with the city council where we really have a bigger joint discussion about what's in here. Some things that we've thought about or wrestled with, like the agriculture and some of the buffers. So I think that would be what I think the path forward is. Um, is that, did I miss anything, Paul?
Um, no. Well, just a couple of things to, to very briefly to think about between now and next week of whether you would like to warn your public hearing before you meet with council or whether you want to wait to, to do that. Either way, can be fine just thinking about it. What you might want to do as public input forums, you know, other than just your public hearing, do you want to have a special you know, input session or have, you know, a explanatory day or something like that, or a video that we post with the newsletter? That kind of thing. And then just, I guess, a, a question in, in terms of thinking about how you might want to prepare for the joint meeting with the council and some of the things that we talked about tonight and other nights of some of the big picture stuff. So just a few things to to noodle on over the next few days for you.
Okay, we have a date yet for the council meeting, the combined meeting? I had preliminarily talked with councillor Helen about March 6th. No, 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 no. April 6th. But that would be one week after next week. So it's not nailed down yet because I wasn't sure if we were going to have like be ready for that in time. So that was, you know, one of the dates that we had had kind of reserved on our calendars. It was the Tuesday of that week. So so that was a kind of tentative or more thing.
I was just going to ask, is it insane that if we just try to have the city council meeting next week? I mean, just let's just have that because then we can, if we warn it, if we, if we warn that next week we may move it, you know, set a public hearing and make that our combo meeting, then we'll know if either the meeting succeeds in a way that we say, yeah, this is on target, let's warn it. Or we're going to get feedback in that meeting that says, oh, okay, we, we need to do some rework and therefore don't warn it. But otherwise does that sound, is that?
What I, what I talked about with Helen and I, and I think still a good idea is to have a draft that people can look at in front of them, maybe ahead of the meeting, you know, even if it's only just the one week. You know, and then that's the version that the public would continue to have for, for comment because we're going to do a big explanation. Like, I know there's been a lot of comment about wanting to have a consistent version that everybody's commenting on. So I Bernie?
Yeah, just following along those thought lines. I mean, I, I think having it ready to warn at the end of next meeting, but then waiting until after we meet with the city council before officially warning it. Just, you know, in case they have anything that they are overly concerned with. And that gives the public a little extra time to review it too, because we can say that, you know, it's ready to go. We're going to present it at the council. You know, there's going to be a huge amount of explanation and probably some public feedback at the council. Then we warn it and, and you know, people have gotten to listen to it at the council and have had a little additional time to review it and chew on it at that point. So that's, that would be my recommendation.
I, I would just back up what Bernie said. I think it makes sense to have that meeting with the council. Even if the public has a draft before we actually warn it for a public hearing, just in case there's something that we need to pivot on.
I'm concerned about staff availability too. I think that we may, we may not have a good ability at that point of time to make changes and actually get the warning out then, because we
Right. Well, you don't have to necessarily make changes that night. You could wait and then say, you know, this is all great feedback. And we'll take it as being part of our public comment period for the hearing. So you could certainly do that. If you were to decide to do it sort of after the council meeting, I might suggest it just being on the same agenda, you know, after the joint meeting that you have five minutes of your own action so that you can, you know, officially get it in the newspaper and things like that. But Jessica is right. The anytime, you know, starting next week, the odds start to creep up that I won't be at a meeting, but that's, you know, that's okay. We're, we got, we, we've got more than just one staff person who can help you get through all this.
I like your approach, Paul, of having it ready and just doing it after we meet with the council.
Me too, but that's also almost why I was pushing, trying to meet with the council next week instead of waiting two weeks. Like, what, I mean, we're not going to look at this again, right? We're, we're, we've, we've closed this for now. Next meeting, we're not. I mean,
Well, I can, I can check. Bernie, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say that, that by waiting till the council, it just gives the public a little more time to review it. And one of the, you know, major feedbacks that I've heard over the past several meetings is that it's a lot to chew on. So you know, I think giving the public kind of the extra week would be welcome.
Agreed.
And for the council to look at something ahead of time, because if we meet next week, they wouldn't have anything ahead of time. I don't know. I, I'll check back in with council leadership too and staff as well.
I, I just thought we could release it to tonight, but we, I guess we can't, right? We can't because we haven't warned it. I see. Okay.
We can't really. Michael?
Do we have a date for next week's meeting, 29:30?
We do not. You were the only one who actually replied that you were available Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. I have a conflict on Tuesday and it sounded like Bernie mine as well. So that was two of us that might not be able to make it Tuesday. It made it mean kind of that we were going to have low numbers.
City council meets Monday, right? Right. And they're, they are meeting Monday for a special meeting to talk about I-89. Um, and also there's a regional housing convening going on there for anybody interested in housing issues. So I would recommend maybe not Monday night.
When are we supposed to talk about who could, who could be available on Wednesday?
Yeah, Wednesday. Wednesday, it looks like everyone, but maybe Bernie would have the same conflicts. That's actually better attendance than Tuesday. Does that work for Paul Connor Wednesday?
Yeah, he can hold a bottle and a mask at the same time.
But I, let me just also suggest to you guys, because we've been meeting every week and Paul's surely kind of focusing on, and we're not going to be opening this again, right? I mean, we're in our next meeting, we, we really aren't, are not going to be working on Article 10 and 12 again until after we meet with the council. So, but we, we need to have another meeting to that we can warn the decision to release this. So are, do we maybe just not have a meeting next week and instead have a meeting at the end of this week for 10 minutes where we warn that we are approving this? And then the sooner you can get a meeting with the council so that we know that we have Paul and we're just progressing, like why, why is it productive? You know, Paul's, you know?
Well, I guess two thoughts for you. One, we do have to wrap up the preparation of the report that goes with this, and this is important. So I need a little bit of time to, to do that. Um, and then two, I, I think that some discussion amongst yourselves of, of what issues you want to bring to the council. And then two, I, I think that some discussion amongst yourselves of, of what issues you want to bring to the council big picture would be valuable. I think they would find that very useful, because I think that they want to, they want to hear about Article 10 and 12, but they also want to, I think, have a little bit of a larger dialogue, so, so I would encourage you to have some time to focus in on what are your key recommendations, key questions, quick, key sort of issues that are out there beforehand, because, because I, I think you want that to be a really productive meeting with council.
Yeah, and we can discuss our public outreach plan as well, because I think they might ask us about that. Okay, so it sounds like still planning, we're going to plan to meet next Wednesday, the 31st, and go through all those items. I guess I would like to suggest we move our other business and minutes to that meeting, too, if possible. Okay, which would mean that we're done, and I, I do really apologize for the late hour, but I think this was a good, good conversation.
Okay, and I'll make sure that the comments in the chat, that you get a copy of all those, everyone, because I know you didn't really get to them tonight, but I'll make sure that you get a copy of that.
Good.
That's seven o'clock. Seven o'clock on Wednesday.
Seven o'clock on Wednesday. And, and Michael, do you have something else before we head out?
Question about, about the minutes, that why don't we send our comments on the minutes to you, or, and or Paul, and then we've got them all, and we can get rid of them quickly.
Perfect, great idea, Michael, thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone, for this long meeting, and we adjourn.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.